For the meeting we had last one. Taking that to review if you have them already and any changes we need to recognize, not look for a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first, got a second. Any questions or comments?
That Ross and A.
Yes. There's none? All of the papers are out?
Uh-huh.
Are you closed? Alright, so we're gonna move on to new business.
I can go ahead and take care of this.
That'd be great.
So, um, I know we've had some inquiries, well staff has had maybe just a few inquiries about digital signs. Maybe former planning board members have had a question about this and so I just wanted to bring some type of clarification with electronic signage. So, um, if you look through it, I'm just gonna make it short, I'm not gonna read through everything. But, um, currently, uh, we, we have just a digital, just to give you a brief history. We do have digital signs of what I'm talking about, like McDonald's, um, digital board, uh, cookout, uh, Bells Ace Hardware and, uh, the Nash County Public School building and I believe Rock Creek Baptist Church, so we, you know, they have one. And so how they were permitted, I know in the back of your packet, um, I wanted to make sure that you could see, um, how they were permitted and when. So they've been out for a while, it looked like the digital signage, you know, when they start issuing those in the planning department, it looked like it had been seen around 2016 or '17 somewhere that end up. So it looked like it's a new thing that's coming out now, times, times are changing. And so in your package, um, on the gender staff report, you also, um, have what different jurisdiction does. So I pulled information from, exactly from what we have, so if you look on page seven, you have information from the code of ordinances, which is section eighteen dash one thirty-seven. So this is how, uh, the digital, um, signage or LED, whatever you wanna call them, that's how they were, they were permitted using this language here. And so also, so you see the digital displays on page seven. And then you have, uh, nine thirty East Avenue, which shows the Nash County Public Schools digital display. The McDonald's on, at five oh one West Washington Street and also at one oh two East Evans, you have your cookout sign. And Nash County, uh, it has its language of what's in their community code of how, what their regulations are for electronic signage. And as you see there, you have the digital display there. And also, um, page nine, Franklinson, Franklinson North Carolina, you have the regulations there. And on the back of page ten, as you can see at their town hall, they have their, they have their digital display on the bottom of their freestanding sign. So most of these digital signs, signage are on freestanding signs. And on page eleven, Wilson, North Carolina has its regulations at the top, followed by photos at the bottom. So I want to make sure I at least show what, how they are permitted, uh, what their regulations are, followed by, sometimes you can lay eyes on, on these photos. And so Bojangles, you see their digital display and McDonald's, uh, showing their digital display. And also on page twelve, I weren't, I wasn't able to get any live, uh, footage of a digital display, but I thought their setup of how their regulations were listed, um, was very easy to read and, and understand. So for Zeblyn, it shows, um, you know, how the definition where permitted and their dimensional standards and their special notes at the bottom. And so what, what, just, just briefly, we just, I just thought it would, this would be the perfect time and for any type of clarification, this would be a time, I feel that staff, um, it wouldn't hurt to add maybe like a definition. After, uh, I, where it has sign elimination that's in the code, this is so up to you, if you feel like what we have in place is good as it is or do you feel you wanna just add an extra, um, definition that specifically talks about electronic signage. And what I pass out to you, this is just a draft, um, if you want to, if you decide that you want, or you feel that electronic message signs, um, definition needs to be added for that, then you can. Um, so I did a draft, that's what I just passed out to you. And if you wanna take a moment of that, I can, um, go over it. So if that definition, it reads electronic message sign, but we can always name it something else. Um, any sign with a message text or photo that changes automatically, such signs shall be permitted as part of a freestanding business sign, business identification sign, subject to the following requirements. One, and these requirements, this is just a draft, this is just, you know, we can always make this changeable. One, maximum square footage shall be the lesser of fifty percent total allowable sign face area or thirty-two square feet. So it'd be the less of the two. May be permitted in the B one.
Fifty percent of what?
Of the allowable sign.
Allowed.
Yes, yes. So, and our number two may be permitted in the B one highway business, B two general business, A one agriculture, and I one industrial zoning districts. And we can discuss that too if you like. Um, number three, the minimum separation from residential zoning district shall be one hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the minimum, uh, four, the minimum separation from another electronic message sign shall be thirty-five feet. Five, electronic message signs within or opposite a residential zoning district shall not be operated or lit between the hours of twelve P M midnight and six A M. Light shall be directed away from a public rightway or residential, or residential premises. Six, shall not be allowed to flash, animate, scroll, or otherwise move, or otherwise move or transition from one message to another in a moving manner. Transition between messages shall be instantaneous. Each message shall be continuously displayed for a minimum of blank seconds before changing to another message. I left a blank there, um, because that's something I guess the board or staff, we can come up with. When I wrote about McDonald's, I believe theirs was roughly maybe five, five to six seconds, or something like that. Seven, shall be equipped with control system that automatically adjusts the light emission level to ambient light conditions so as not to cause glare or excessive brightness. And I, um, thought that was a good one, um, to add in, 'cause I didn't put an exact number, 'cause I'm not a professional engineer, so with the lumens and how high light is and whatnot, so. Because if it's too bright, at least I feel if they have an adjustable, adjustable, um, light lighting system, they can control, they can control that. And H shall not be permitted on sites where existing freestanding signs are non-conforming unless such signs are made conformant to this chapter. And non-electronic message signs are not permitted on prim, on all premises advertising signs. So this was just.
Is that billboards maybe?
Yes. Well, billboards are, well, plug in, 'cause they're, they're, um, advertising other businesses that's not on that, on that location. So anything that's off premises is not allowed.
'Cause Rock Creek Mountain has those, they have the ones that change.
It might be.
And a lot of those. Yeah, those may be DOT.
I'll put it from the house, that'd be cool. Yeah. So, couple of questions.
Hmm.
The twelve to midnight, I mean twelve midnight to six A M, I think it's real important on some places, but like cookout, I, I care less. You know what I'm saying? So I think it depends on where it is.
Yes, and so that's already, that, that came from number four from out of our code, so I just put that, yeah, 'cause in a commercial district.
Like, but Bells needs to stop at twelve o'clock, 'cause there's houses.
Yes, exactly, so that's why I said within that one hundred and fifty feet, if you're within that one hundred and fifty feet, so that, that kind of.
This is saying that all of them are gonna be off at midnight to six A M, correct?
Then or opposite a residential.
Opposite of a residential zoning district.
Sorry, sorry. Didn't keep moving, huh? Oh, it is? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Are they trying to miss within or opposite of, I guess I need to.
So what does that mean? So next to, next to a residential?
Right, next to residential district, yes. But then too, in our elimination code section, it has, um, no sign within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential, maybe it will be between the hours of twelve to six A M.
I think that's, I think that's important on residential.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So I found, we could switch, I could put that same language in that one for number five.
So it doesn't address churches, 'cause churches can be in other, other areas.
Yeah, and I, that was another discussion if you want to have, 'cause like I said, the only, the only, um, sign I know of now is Rock Creek, but that's in a A one zoning district and we haven't permitted for that. But you still have some businesses operating in the A one zoning district.
Do you have any current applications for signs being requested?
I don't. But I have had, uh, inquiry or two from churches, for a church to, um, who wants a digital, or inquiring about, um, the digital display.
It just says to have to shut off at midnight to six A M, not that it's not allowed or, I mean, it's not that the sign wouldn't be allowed.
Right, and that's, and that's the thing, if, I didn't put residential in there, but if you want churches to have them in the residential district, you could add language in order for non, non-residential uses within a residential district.
I think needs to be in there.
Yeah, 'cause, um, we have schools, you know, some schools and stuff have those. 'Cause I know some of the churches, um, or in areas, they could be, I know we have some in R ten and some in the agricultural zoning district, so. And I had that thought, that's why I brought this up, that's why I brought it, I just didn't put it in.
National Methodist work, me and Hango is in the residential area, and we actually asked about digital signs, we ended up putting the records on it, but we actually talked, talked about it.
And it was somebody else too, I couldn't remember what other, what other church that was, so, and I felt, and that's why I felt this was important to have this meeting too. So, um, we could add in here, um, if you like, none, is that what you wanna do, add the none?
Non-residential.
None residential uses, so do you, would, so coming from the.
Restrictive. Yeah, restrictive more.
Okay. So you all are on board for doing, uh, definition, extra definition into that stuff?
I know, um, Nashville Baptist has temporary digital sign, I don't know if that was part of your conversation with somebody or.
It was.
Like a trailer.
I, okay, I couldn't remember.
Blood bank.
What?
Blood bank.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they advertised other things too, it was fine, but they advertised like, other, you know, join us, and it was like.
They may, they may be in the process of.
That's what I wondered.
And I, it wouldn't surprise me that the Nashville Methodist Church does do something like that too, because they have, they are not nationally united Methodist.
We just, we just replaced it last week, or two weeks ago.
So it's, it's.
Get their place, five thousand dollars.
And it's not like they're gonna be, this, I mean, I feel that that's not gonna be that bright in what time, but that's.
I was gonna ask if I could.
Yeah.
Is this gonna be grandfathered, like ones they already have signs, are these rules gonna be grandfathered to them? And the reason I ask is, Rock Creek?
Yeah, that's what we just discussed, yeah.
Right by their sign, one, two, three o'clock in the morning.
And it's a.
It's open, but it's bright.
Sure is, 'cause I live right on the corner here, it is, it is.
It lights it up.
And not that I stay, not that I stay out that late in the morning, but if I go to a fire call.
Right.
And I'm on my way back home, I take First Street.
Yeah.
You come around that corner, it's black.
And speaking of that, because I actually have the zoning provision here, so now we can do that as a, I guess.
But I was gonna, I was gonna ask about the brightness, can you, is there a way to measure it?
For that, I don't know, but.
That might be something.
Yeah, but having the regulation in here, that's why, um, we, uh, we need to say have an adjustable, adjustable control for light. But here, for their permit, it is on there that. Yeah, um, twelve, I'm trying to read what this is. Twelve midnight and six A M cannot be illuminated during this time.
That just needs to be brought to their attention.
Yes, yeah.
Or maybe a setting where they could fix it as far as the ambient conditions, where, you know, when it gets dark, it's not quite as bright.
Right, they're supposed to have auto adjust.
Yeah.
The, the newer signs, I don't know how long that sign has been there, but the newer signs do have, uh, photo cell built in where it auto adjusts for nighttime. But theirs don't, or hasn't, and maybe a photo cell gone bad, I'd be.
And I think that would be a good, good thing to add to this, especially for your residential zoning districts.
Touch on this, item six, the first.
What page?
Do we have any signs that are, would be in violation of that first sentence?
On what page?
On the sit, the nine.
The draft.
Oh, oh, um, well, this would be current, current signs going forward.
Correct, but do we have any signs out there now that would be in violation to that, if they were?
Um, I don't believe so, but I can go back and check because.
Explain to me, shall not be allowed to flash, animate, scroll, or otherwise move or transition from one message to another in a moving manner.
So like if you're, if it's doing this and rolling into.
Okay.
And, or if it's something, but can you design?
Can you transition.
Right, right, so, so like the McDonald's, theirs is not flashing, but there is, is instantaneously, you have another picture.
That's how A's does, it changes.
It changes, it changes, right.
But the.
So would that be in violation?
No.
Okay.
No.
About how, um, Bells Ace, is theirs, was theirs being, um, in, in code?
I believe so, 'cause I've been to the times, I've been through that area, theirs doesn't, they, they don't have any type of flashing, yeah.
So like I was looking at the Nash Central sign, it looks like it's gonna keep going, but.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen that one, and actually.
It does, it's like.
It goes along well.
Would that, that would be in violation, 'cause it scrolls.
It scrolls.
What's wrong with scrolling?
Uh, we, that's what we discussed.
I mean flashing and, I can see for sure, 'cause that's distraction.
That was from another, was it from another?
Scrolling, I'm not sure is an issue, we can talk about it, I'm open for, and the animate, I guess is like, like.
Cartoon made or something.
Cat's Cane Man hitting them.
An distraction for.
That'd be an attraction, yeah. But I'm not sure what scrolling is, I mean, I, I'm up in the argument, but I, I don't know scrolling.
I'm just trying to read it.
I was gonna also say the limit, how many seconds one can stay up?
Yeah, that's.
I wouldn't limit it.
Yeah, and that's why.
They're paying to advertise and they leave it up there for ten seconds.
Right.
How many cars go by, it can't.
It's a minimum, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's why I, I left that blank on here on the draft that we have, because I looked at McDonald's and I think theirs, their, their sign is usually up there for maybe five, six seconds before it changes.
I would think five plus.
Yeah.
I read slow, so that's good.
You wanna take them one at a time, it's kinda, some maximum square foot, it seems to be okay, right?
Well, this, it would not allow for the whole sign to be electronic, that's what it says.
Correct, it's, so, so when we.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, yes, fifty percent of the total allowable sign face. So how we do the total allowable sign face, it depends on, um, what district they're in, so we have a chart within our.
Four foot by eight foot, which is the size of a standard sized piece of plywood, that's a right pair of time.
And, and so our, depending on the size, because if I'm not mistaken, I think the freestanding sign depends on how much frontage you have, is that, is that? Okay, I think.
My district did, my district did, it had to measure the front.
Yes, yes, the, the, I knew it was something like that, so, so just say for example, if you did that, if you did half of whatever, and it was like sixty square feet, so you know you can't do that, so you have to use, you have to go with the thirty-two square feet. And that's when, um, looking at the other jurisdictions, look like they had maybe thirty-two square feet that are popular.
Who's gonna police this once it becomes effective, Sean?
Well, the town, this will go before, um, town council, so. But, but, um, every commercial business that come in, we, once we get sign permits in, we'll know how, we can pretty much regulate and put our comments down on here to make sure they comply.
What other districts do we have that are non-commercial, non-residential?
O and I, well, O and I is both, um, you have few commercials, like most of the offices and whatnot that's in there in residential.
It's not allowed in O and I.
That, that's up to you, I just, I just laid out mostly all of the commercial, um, with the exception of A one, but if you want to add in O and I, you can add that.
I'm trying to think.
Trying to think, um, some of the office institution that will probably work, 'cause you do have some off of Eastern, I think.
It's like Barnes Street, so like Nationwide and Southern Bank, none of those can have it, right? The O and I, or is that B?
I think all that's B two, B two. Yeah, I think all that's B two.
So it's on B two.
I believe all that's B two. Um, trying to think, some of the, well.
You got your, where's that?
Most of the O and I, you have, and then, oh, there's only that.
I mean, I think it's O and I, maybe, depends on where it is, so.
Yeah, depending on where you're in.
Offices, offices, institute to cookout, or.
So then the regulations probably get them. Well.
Whether you get, you gotta be a free, gotta be a freestanding.
Yes, it's gotta be freestanding too, but in being too, um. I, I don't think so. Yeah, or even, um, it's not a lot of office institution. I'm trying to think of any that has actual freestanding signs, other than the one on Eastern or Washington. Yeah.
Is my office across from, um, H, is that L and I, or is that B two? On the corner of Church and Washington. I'm not sure if that, but, but.
Field of show, Xavier's.
Two twenty-five, East Washington. We don't have freestanding.
I mostly, everything on there looks like is, um, B two.
What about Farm Bureau behind Domino's, is that B two also?
Oh, that is, um, I mean, that'd be B one, most of that'd be.
B one.
Yeah.
So we don't have a O and I district, for the most part, we got a.
It looks like there may be some, um.
The DMS station.
Not there. It's on by there, Eastern.
Looks like we're not.
School building.
Yeah, by the school.
School.
School administration.
Yeah, all that I hear is.
Oh, that's O and I?
Yeah.
Yeah, school, school management building, the, the National Art Hall building, there you go.
So that, I think.
That's mostly vocal, but yeah, that's what's out.
O and I's being included, yeah, I think it's being included, same guy, why not? So the hundred and fifty feet enough, enough from the residential district?
Residential district or from a residence?
I said district, um, 'cause that's, that kinda ties in with our code, what's in our code for, um, the code of ordinances. No sign within a hundred feet of a residential zoning, you know, between twelve.
Hundred or hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty.
Looks like the bar bring is also O and I.
On the corner.
Six oh five, oh, East Washington is O and I.
Can you copy right behind?
Yeah, I think most of O and I is off of Washington or Eastern.
One hundred, one oh three, I think, East Washington is O and I, or is it South Austin?
And then, um, Anna, Joanna, Renee, they just, it's on that piece.
The bed and breakfast.
Over there. Yeah, over there, I was gonna say about where it was, that one piece, but, um, other, the other areas over there, I think is B two.
But isn't that too close to the neighborhood to have a sign there?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not within a hundred, 'cause you have like residents across street and right next door, even, and, even though.
I wouldn't want them next door to sign that.
And that's why, okay, so that hundred and fifty feet, that's giving you separation from a residential zoning district. And it, and it also, and also with, even with elimination, it's still a hundred and fifty feet.
So thirty-five foot from each other came from some other ordinances?
It did, and I thought about that, because for example, like if you had, um, two commercial buildings right beside each other and depending on where they place their sign.
Doing sign.
And you don't wanna block it.
Right, exactly, and, and, and that way it won't be, they won't be too, too close to each other.
Like K S T McDonald's, so they got a thirty-five foot apart.
I think that's, that's something significant.
Does it need a setback?
Their freestanding signs are, they have to be ten feet from the, from the, um, from a public rightway anyway. So that's already in our freestanding sign code, so that's why I didn't have to add any, any of that information in there.
So a digital sign will have to meet both sign requirements?
Yeah, so the, so the, I'm sorry.
All of the other.
The digital, the digital sign would be part of a freestanding sign.
So all of the other codes pertain to digital signs as well as this is gonna be added for the digital?
Right, gotta be for digital, but the digital be, would be included within the freestanding sign.
But what if they decided to put a digital sign on the side of a building?
They can't do that.
They can't.
It's just freestanding sign.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't even know why I'm opening that again. Y'all have to give me control.
No, I, I was just, I was just asking from a business standpoint, I wanted to put a sign on the side of a building.
Sometimes do, but I'm not ready for that yet.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's not many places in town where it would, it would be.
Beneficial.
Beneficial.
Right.
Unless maybe faith Christian puts something up there where the hands are, but then you get the further.
Right.
And the square footage is four by eight, you can't see it so much, and you get fifty, hundred feet away from the road, so.
So the good thing for them is they just keep their, the sign on the facade.
And keep what they got.
So is downtown allowed to have freestanding signs?
And then have it where it's put.
'Cause I, 'cause I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't.
But some, but some, um, B two, you have some, I guess, maybe buildings that's in a B two that has, um, room to put a freestanding.
Like the admin building or the, maybe the main courthouse.
The arts building could have one, okay, I guess, C D S, C D S project.
Well, C D S, um.
Haven't been on.
I think they, it was, do you know the reason why they couldn't have, well, I know it was a ha, a house beside it, but all that's in the.
It's not a hundred and fifty feet either.
So that wouldn't be that, that wouldn't be that, but it, it just, but in the, in the, um, in our current regulations, seven hundred and fifty feet, you know, during that time, that elimination had to be off. I didn't see anywhere where they couldn't place it, so I don't, I don't know.
So that's really, if it's illuminated, that's just guidelines, and then it's a sign placement, it's what we're doing right now.
Right, so you have, so the elimination part, take care of it, take care of it when, at nighttime.
Yeah.
But then, um, so number three gives you a separation from your residential zoning, do you want to do residential zoning? But then, um, so number three gives you a separation from your residential zone in district, do you wanna be residential zone in district or resident, or a hundred and fifty feet for residence?
I think it's both.
From residential district.
Whatever, there was closer.
If you're the district.
The, if this is district, the residents will be further anyway, wouldn't it?
Right, when the district.
Cause like you could have a, what if you have like a, a B two or B one and a R ten right beside it? So that, that business won't be, so that's why I said, like, you can have these signs, and for them to not be connolored by these signs, and, you know, so this is like, you know, you may be lucky if your business is here and you're not close to a residential zone in district.
I like the district order.
Okay.
I just think that, for now, if you always.
If you got a vacant lot that's residential, R ten beside that B one or beside that church, if they choose to build a house, then that.
If, if the church already has a sign, versus not, yeah, right.
It's there, it's a turn.
They got a choice to put a house there or not.
Right.
Is, um, I don't know if yours, yours took on an order or not, but, um, number five, when it says light, it should be directed away from public right of way or residential premises, is the intent of that to have it? I'm trying to think about how, you know, signs are normally placed perpendicular to the street, so you can read them driving.
Right.
But that would then would be, it could, well, depend on how far away you are, it could be directed towards a residential, you know, you know what I'm saying, like, so I don't know how, is there an intent behind there to make it position one way or another?
You don't get to do a one-way side, in other words, if this sign, if you do a sign, you have the option to do it one way or two-way, if one way is facing toward a residential and the other one's not, you could only do the lighted sign inside of it.
And a public right of way within the street, right, really, or mostly, or if it's a corner or something like that.
Just wanna keep it on people's, um, residence.
Right, right. I do read that, but.
Alright, so if we use number three, then, um, natural baptists and natural methods could not have this sign, because they're, they have houses, they have houses next door or either across the street, is that what I understand, am I reading it right?
From that, from that sign, from that sign to that residential zone in district.
Correct, which would be the road, into the road. So you have to, you have to switch.
I was also the sign, from the sign to that resident, from where the sign is located to that residential zone in district.
So like ours is twenty foot from the road, and then the road, and then there's residential, so, we have to put it up near the building, is that, is that what you're saying, to make it work, be allowed?
But it's still within a freestanding sign, but from where that location is, cause you wanna do it on the sign, so you gotta move your sign.
So national baptists, same thing, they have to put it close to the, close to the building.
And in the middle site.
To keep it away from.
From each, cause they have a road and a, two ways.
So the sign's a hundred fifty foot in the district or the property?
I'd say the sign.
The sign.
Well, how do you wanna rework that?
Why, I wanna make sure it's fair, but at the same time, I wouldn't wanna live really close to one, so I gotta, I'm conscious of that myself.
But it is restrictive on things, places like that.
It's like, so the national Baptist sign where it is now, I'm thinking they couldn't put one there in the same spot, because of the houses across the street.
And is, is that, is that in a, a B two or R ten?
Across the street or ten.
Right.
For the first, first two or three houses.
Well, it don't matter, it don't matter, but then you got, uh, well, non-resident, non-residential uses and residential districts, unless you put on there, um, with the exception of churches and schools, and, and the similar.
Well, it's two issues, one is, do we allow, cause the church, the church is there, cause they're a church, and then two, do we allow the sign, cause they're residential, next door and or close by, so, it's two, two questions.
Right.
That's probably the only thing I struggled with, is getting that right, I think anything else was pretty good, in my opinion. But I think scrolling.
Possibly change the hours? Instead of midnight, we get ten, ten being elected, say.
For those uses.
Yes, so.
That's options.
Or, or residential issues.
Within the residential, yes, yes, ma'am.
We're a small town, definitely gonna be places where it's gonna be, things come together.
Like the most churches that don't be on a residential, you can't start any residential.
That's right. So we have a sign, we're not gonna do a whole business.
So number five, you wanna change it from Toyota team, these are the ones that's, um.
Or, or, or close, if it's a bit, cause I mean, well.
Would it conflict though with illumination ordinance?
Elimination ordinance is, um, is the same time.
It says twelve to, twelve midnight, I suppose, I mean, is there something there we would?
Yeah, cause this, and then number five, it does say, should not be operated or lit between hours of twelve and six.
I think that's good, except for places like, that are two hundred percent bus, business district, I think, I think it's, should be allowed to do what you want to, like cooking out at McDonald's.
But see, they, they're not within the residential, they're far from the residential zone in district, so.
I think so, I think.
Right.
So I mean, ten o'clock, you do, you put your child to bed at nine thirty and you live across the street from that, I don't know.
So that's why it's in here within or opposite of the residential zone in district, so if you're within residential, so these are ones that's within the residential perimeter district. Is it ten o'clock?
What about closing, either closing or ten o'clock, whichever comes earlier. I mean, I mean, most, most businesses are closed before then, I mean, like, faces closed at what, seven?
Yeah, if I'm a business owner, I don't want the light turned off on, when I'm out there, I want people right by and seeing my business.
Yeah, that's true.
Or actually closed on the holiday.
Yeah, I want you to see, I want you to see my sign, even though I closed at five thirty, six o'clock, I want you to see my sign until nine, as long as you got a lot of traffic coming through.
And of course, the church, when the church closes, you know.
Especially if you spend thirty to fifty thousand dollars on LED signs.
Yeah, I see that.
I think twelve to six is reasonable.
Okay.
Um, for certain areas.
The way, where, is within or opposite of a residential zone?
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable, we've just gotta decide.
And if a situation came up after this was in effect, say from twelve to six, and somebody wanted to, um, um, uh, state their case as to why they couldn't keep their lights on until, say, one o'clock, what would they, what would be their recourse? Is that the board of adjustments?
Now, for the new one, for anybody who's coming in, this is in place, and for somebody to come in with a new permit, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that they have this.
You gonna hold them?
Yes.
But if, if they requested, in, who would they go to have it changed, board, would the board of adjustments?
Well, the board of adjustment, if, if they wanna make an appeal or anything from our decision.
It would get into the board of adjustment, so you create more work for the board of adjustment.
We know guys.
College.
So do you, um, with what we have, can we go back and rework this for you and bring it back to the, to the next meeting of a clear, a clean, clean draft?
I need to be safe something there about, uh, places that are in residential area, we didn't include.
Yeah, non-residential uses in, in residential districts, to add that to number two.
And we take it in five seconds or six seconds for the middle one?
I think five can get to be kind of a lot, I mean, you can get.
And this, this is not, not really to penalize or restrict a person, but it really, it, it's, it benefits them, so when they, uh, contract with somebody to install a sign, this is what we.
I think that's exactly what I'm saying.
And that's also, I believe, it's helpful to add, add this section in here.
Yeah.
For instances of the church or, like Renee Silk's place, could you do a special permit where they got a sign permission from each one of the residents around it, they could have a sign? Like a special use, if, if everybody in that residential area signs and say, hey, it's okay for that church to have a sign there, then you could.
Well, she couldn't get a special use because, um, we have the regulations by the second place, but by us, um. Tell her that she can't do it, and, and if she doesn't agree, or if they don't agree with our interpretation, then that'd be something that has to go before the board of adjustment, but again, we have our regulations about the, you know, how far you have to be from a residential district.
You might be up in another county, you might, you might be a neighbor.
Cause it'd be somebody else coming, it'd be like, who, who, that kind of deal with, why can't I do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the three that agree, the one is the one that's actually close to the sign.
Well, going back to natural methods and natural baptists, both those signs are with, are, are less than a foot from, and they're limited, they're both lined up, so I mean, we're al, we're already not following the rules. And, and also the big one on your, on, on First Street, by the, by the.
Well, you're in compliance now, because it's just a, you can have the sign there, but the thing is, well, saying without this, you're in compliance, because if your church cuts illumination off between twelve and six, you're, that's what the current ordinance is, the current ordinance doesn't say you cannot have it.
There's no hundred fifty feet.
Right.
There's not, there's not.
In the elimination part.
There's not, so.
It's just elimination, it does not have anything to do with the distance where you have to be.
So we're, so we're saying in the, in the electronic sign, you can't have one within a hundred and fifty feet, but an elimination says, if you're within a hundred and fifty feet, you have to cut it off at midnight.
Right, so that's what, like, do you want to have?
So if we do this, what we're saying is, that the church next to cornerstone, natural baptists, natural methods, and others can't have, can't have any signs.
That's what I'm saying, do you want?
If you understand that, and I'm a liberal guy.
Do you have to put that on there, or do you wanna take that out? And, and allow churches, but during that time, they just cut it off, where, meaning, meaning you can do a digital sign, but you have to cut it off if you're within or opposite of that zone in district.
I mean, if the church builds on the lot across from the, that's a church, they coordinate, they coordinate, they can't have it, they can't do, um, a lit-up sign, because.
Cause they're thirty-five feet away, and you can change these numbers now.
And I, we just, I think the hundred fifty is the one that would, is more restricted, the thirty-five isn't a big deal.
He's thirty-five, that's.
But, and that's just from another sign.
But if you wanna think about, that's something about the next meeting.
Or what, or what other uses would be some besides stretches, I mean, schools is a good one, national elementary.
They could have where.
Yeah.
Or, that's why, you know, you have none resident, none residential uses in residential districts, that's why it's like, we can question, put a question mark beside this, um, separation from residential zoning district.
Brazile Hill couldn't have one.
Right, so you wanna, cause you, you don't wanna put regulations in there and it hit, and it comes back and kind of. So, we'll just leave that one, I like it.
And then the, the scrolling, I, I, no, but nobody's given an argument, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to argue about it, but nobody's given an argument. Um, I mean, flashing is bad, I think that's a distraction.
Oh, yeah, that, that flashing, most of all the ordinances, we don't flash them.
The scroll, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean.
You know. Where did, where did we, where did, go ahead.
Well, and I was gonna say, National Community College has one and it scrolls sometimes, I think, doesn't it, let it scroll.
And I was trying to pull that one, but I couldn't get a good picture of it.
Yeah.
Theirs has animate too. Theirs has an animation.
National Community?
But theirs probably in, that's probably not in our jurisdiction, so they, that's in their ordinance, so.
That changes everything, it's true.
And if I find some other language here to this, I, I will, um, add that too.
Or otherwise move, the other, or otherwise move is also, I mean, I don't know if that means that that.
Yeah, that's, and that came from somewhere.
But that could be a interpretation too.
Yeah, we can take that out.
I think that means like, like when you like, it goes from a spot in the middle and comes out, and then it goes back to that spot and comes out again, that's the moving part, I think. Alright, so what, you're gonna re, you're gonna redo a draft and then get back to us?
Right, and then once we have time to wrap in, uh, we will set it up as a public hearing, or if you wish, I can go ahead and just do the draft and we'll set that, so we'll have to prolong it, um, so for the May, not May, March, I'm sorry, for March twenty eighth, we, I go ahead and set it up as a public hearing. Um, for this ordinance amendment, because of the change to our, to the code ordinances, so we're required to do public hearing, whether or not people show up or not, so, um, so it'll be a draft for.
In the meantime, can maybe you ask a few other places about the, um, the non-decomming issues, what we're asking about, like the schools and churches and places like that.
Yeah, so, um, we'll clean this up and bring it back for you on March twenty eighth.
Okay. Our next meeting is March twenty eighth at six P M, and if we wanna join, we can have a motion to do that.
Motion. Ladies and gentlemen.
And seconded, right?
Sure.
All favor of Jersey's eye.